Good evening. This is the Milford Zoning Board of Appeals, December 2017 meeting. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call please.
Mr. Tizola.
Here.
Mr. Vassino.
Here.
Ms. Ferrante.
Here.
Mr. Soto.
Here.
Mr. Dubois.
Here.
Mr. Hirsch.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Also present this evening are Stephen Harris, our zoning officer, and Meg Green, our recording We're missing one member, permanent member, this evening, so, Mr. Hirsch, will you, as an alternate, would you fill in tonight, please?
I will, yes.
Thank you. This evening, if you're here for item number one on the agenda, it has been withdrawn. Item number four, okay, I'm sorry, item number one is 117 Holly Avenue, so if you're here for that, it's withdrawn. Item number four, 40 Crabtree Lane, is tabled, postponed? Okay, it's postponed. Okay, if anyone feels that there's someone on this board that might be a conflict of interest to their application, please let us know. Otherwise, Mr. Secretary.
Item number two from the agenda, 19 Reed Street, MBP 44/412/17, SFA-10 Zone, Patricia and Anthony Marciano owners, variance of section 3.2.4.1 to permit the conversion of a one-family dwelling into a two-family dwelling on a lot having 8,748 square feet of area and a whiff of 70 feet, where 10,000 square feet of area and 100 feet of whiff is required, and section 3... thank you Attorney Lynch, and section 3.2.4.2 to permit a side yard setback of 5.4 feet, where 10 is required to construct an addition.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Just for the record, my name is Thomas Lynch. I'm an attorney with the law firm of Lynch, Trembickian Boynton, and my office is located here in Milford at 63 Cherry Street. And I'm here tonight representing Anthony and Patricia Marciano, who are seated in the front row behind me here. My clients are the recent purchasers of 19 Reed Street, and were before you tonight with an application seeking two variances. The first is to allow a re-establishment of a two-family use at this property. I'm going to go into some details about the background of the property, but it was for many, many years a two-family house. That two-family use was quote-unquote "abandoned" by a prior owner, and my clients want to obtain a variance to re-establish the two-family use in the SFA-10 zone. We're going to talk a little bit about what that zone entails and the density of residential uses in that zone. My clients are also seeking an application to allow a side yard variance in the SFA-10 zone. In that zone, you're required to have a side yard of 10 feet from the property line, and to allow their moving into this house and reside in it, it's going to be owner-occupied, they are seeking to put a bedroom on the first floor. It's going to be a one-story addition, some 400 square feet in size, on the right-hand side of the property. Plans that were given to you include a site plan that was prepared by Andrew Flanagan, as well as elevations and floor plans that were prepared by Leonard Hall, who also happens to be here tonight. I've given to you a handout, and I'm going to try to lay the framework here to, as I stated at the outset, to give you a feel for what's been going on in this property over the years. The house that's on there is a 2,000-square-foot residence that was constructed in 1870, and as we all know, our zoning regulations were instituted in 1930, and prior to 1930, this was used as a two-family residence throughout that period of time. And I've given to you a handout. The first couple of pages just basically shows the vision appraisal, dimensions of the property, the square footage of the residence that's on the property, as well as the title history. But if you look at page three, it shows the zone classification as being SFA-10. The property is located as well in the south of the Green Historic District, so my clients also have a pending application before the Historic District Commission for approval of the improvements that we're going to be presenting to you tonight. So there's basically a two-stage process. It's first to get approval from this board, if you see fit, to grant these variances, and then secondly, to go to the South of the Green Historic Commission for approval of the plans themselves. So, the prior owner to my clients had removed a second-floor kitchen, and the handout that I gave you shows some pictures of what was left. And it's interesting just to note, if you go to about the fifth or sixth page, it shows the second-floor kitchen pantry that was left remaining. There were some other remnants of the two-family use that were left. The page after that shows the second-floor countertop with the height of the electrical kitchen outlets that are still there. There's a second-floor outlet at countertop height on the next series of photos. And also, there's two thermostats. There's a first-floor thermostat, and there's a second-floor thermostat. So the infrastructure, so to speak, of converting this house back to a two-family use is there. And I'll go through Leonard's plans with you in just a moment, but basically, it's to convert the room that's on the second floor that was used as a kitchen, back to a kitchen use, and as I said, the addition on the first floor would be to have another bedroom built. The handout also is interesting, because if you go to the fourth page, what we've done here is taking a GPS copy of the map of the area, and then supplemented it with the page after that, showing that there are many, many two-family uses on Reed Street. We've shown with the colored dots, the red dots on the aerial map show the one-family dwellings based on the tax assessor's data. The green dots are two-family dwellings based on the data. And if you go to the next page, we've actually gone through all 15 residences on Reed Street, showing that seven of them are two-family dwellings, and seven of them are single-family dwellings. So it's really important to stress this in our presentation to you, is that asking for a conversion of this property back to a two-family use really is in conformity with the area. There's an equal distribution of houses on the street that are single-family, as well as two-family residences, and they are all constructed prior to the zoning regulations. Most of them were in the late 1800s. There were few that were built right at the turn of the century, but as we all know, this area and its historic designation belies it. These are all older houses that have been used as a variety of single-family and two-family uses over the years. The property, as I said at the outset as well, is located in the SFA-10 zone, and I made a copy at the last three pages of the handout that I gave to you, showing what uses are permitted in the SFA-10 zone. Basically, that zone, and it's a very rare zone, there's not a lot of areas in town that have this designation. There's a pocket of properties in the Village Road area of Woodmont that are zoned SFA-10. Actually, the property at the corner of Gulf Street and Cherry Street, where Greg Field and Angelo Lisi put in the apartments that have recently been built, that was zoned SFA-10 as well. And it allows for a denser, or a more dense, utilization of residential uses. Typically, in this zone, you have duplexes, single-family attached dwellings, and you have lots that are as small as 5,000 square feet, or if you have a double lot that's larger than 5,000 square feet, you have to hold to a minimum frontage of 70 feet and the minimum of 10,000 square feet. So because of the fact that this was a non-conforming lot, the lot size is some 8,748 square feet, and the lot width is 79 feet, again, these are parts of the request for the conversion back to the two-family use, but the chart that we gave you at the outset, the fourth page there, shows that the size of this lot is, again, in conformity with the other lots that are located in the area. Now, in terms of the addition itself, there is a fence that's along the property line between my client's property and the folks that own the property, just to the northwest of that. This is going to be a one-story addition. When we first were looking at the plans, there was the thought of putting a two-story addition, where you would have an additional bedroom on the second floor and a bedroom on the first floor. But in my discussions with them, and I think that Len had the same thought as well, in terms of putting a second floor on that addition, it might be obtrusive to the neighbors, and it might be something that wouldn't be looked upon favorably by the board, so what we did was, we left it at a single-level addition, and with the fence that's located along the property line between my client's property and the adjacent property, we feel that it's not going to be obtrusive to the neighbor at all. So, you know, basically, in summary here, we're asking for these variances to allow a re-establishment of a use that is in conformity with the area. My clients wish to stress very strongly in this application that they are going to be living in this house. They currently live in Orange. The plan is to put the first-floor addition on with the master bedroom and the bath. They're going to reside on the first floor and then have a tenant on the second floor, and they really want to enhance this property. The plans that Len has drawn, again... I believe you got copies of the floor plans and the elevations, but the addition is going to match the architectural features of the main house as it is now. That's the front elevation view. This is the side elevation from the neighbor's property, again, where the fence is located. This is going to be the rear elevation. And then lastly, we have the floor plan laid out with the, again, the master bedroom on the first floor, and then the conversion of the area on the second floor for the additional kitchen. So with that, we'd be happy to entertain any questions that you may have, and like I said, the architect is here as well, who can address any questions as to the structure.
Questions? Go ahead, Mr. Soto.
Attorney Lynch, did you consider putting the addition where the deck is and putting the deck where the addition is, and you wouldn't need a side variance at all? Just make that deck like 13 feet, or whatever it is to the setback? All right, you see where the deck is in the back of the house? Put the addition there, the one-story addition there, and then put the deck where the one-story addition is. Reverse them. But make the deck, don't make it as wide, and you can make it longer if you had to, go along the side of the addition, and you wouldn't need a variance on the side at all, and I think it would look better.
Tom, you're going to need the microphone, please.
Well, they might have to reconfigure the inside a little bit, you know what I mean?
Right.
With a hallway or something.
But I'm just saying, without, and you're raising a good point, there's no question about it. I mean, and that's one of the things I always give you guys a lot of credit for, you're looking for ways to eliminate or avoid variances, but I just think that if you look, again, at the floor plan, going through the dining room and the kitchen out to a master bedroom in the back, there's not a lot of houses with that sort of flow. Right? Okay.
And look at that, but, you know, that's the architect's problem.
Right? Okay.
Might have to put the kitchen in the addition, and then...
Okay, you said your question? Okay.
I have a question for you, Mr. Lynch.
Sure.
You said the use, was it 1930, it was abandoned as a two-family?
No, I think the owner, just prior to my clients, turned it into a single-family. It was a two-family from 1870 up to...
2003.
Yeah, 2003.
How was it a two-family, I mean, the way it was being used, as opposed to the way it's proposed with the changing? Because right now, it's a single-family house?
Right, they removed the kitchen from the second floor.
Okay, so it's a single-family house right now, it's conforming, so you're asking us to make it non-conforming and change it to a two-family?
And it was that way for almost 100 years? Right? My math is right? 130 years?
From when, 1930?
No. It was built as a two-family in 1870. The zoning regulations went into effect in 1930. That's what legally made it a legal non-conforming use, and then it was abandoned in 2003. So, you know, it was all those years, a two-family.
So if it was legally non-conforming, and then became conforming, why should we make it non-conforming again?
Well, because the arguments that I've given to you is that it's in an area where there's many, many two-families. They want to put it back to a use that conforms with at least 50% of the other houses on the street.
Any other questions for Mr. Lynch right now? Okay. Anyone else speaking in favor of this application? Anyone else speaking in favor? Is there anyone here opposed to this application? If you're opposed, please come forward.
Chairman Soto, I just wanted to note that a letter was delivered at the office today from town Reed Street in opposition.
Okay, go ahead. Please state your name, your address, please.
Okay, my name is Robin O'Grady. I reside at 32 Reed Street. I have copies of a letter I gave to neighbors, and I have 10 signatures opposing this application. I'm going to keep it short, but the thing that worries me the most is if this is passed, it's setting a precedent for more overdevelopment of our...
Excuse me, yeah, can you pull that microphone just a little closer to you?
Like that?
Yes, yeah, we can't hear you too well.
Okay, okay. Do I have to start over again? Okay, thank you. So my main problem is setting a precedent for large additions to historic houses that are infringing on property lines. It's just not appropriate, and I'm sorry that this has come to this, but I hope you take into consideration the character of the Historic District, which will suffer negative impact for any application to further enlarge the dwelling at 19 Reed Street on a plot of land that cannot contain additions, and also consider the stress and anxiety that this addition is causing the neighbor at 23 Reed Street, because it's encroaching on her property lines. This is really stressing her out a lot, and I'm advocating for her rights. She is unable to attend due to health issues. I just want to keep the neighborhood as it is. We don't need overdevelopment on Reed Street. It's a tight street. I don't know if you folks are familiar with it. There's often parking on both sides of the road. It's just, I really am opposing this. Do you want the copies of the signatures?
Go ahead, please.
Hi, my name is Maria Henley, and I live at 31 Reed Street. I purchased my house a year and a half ago, and the big thing that drew me to the neighborhood and to the house was that it is a Historic District. It is a beautiful street with beautiful old homes on it, and I bought it because of how it is in 2016, not how it was in 1930 or 2003. My house also has the remnants of a kitchen upstairs, but I use it as single-family, and that's how I see, that's how I would like the neighborhood to stay. But my particular concern is the cars. I live next door to a recently renovated two-family, and there are seven, by my count, seven cars associated with that house, and parking for three, which means that there are always at least four cars parked out on the street, right up to my driveway, right across from my driveway. I have to negotiate around cars every time I get out of my driveway. And, you know, the tenants there, they're very nice. I have no problem with them. But, you know, sometimes people are blocking my driveway. Sometimes they park in my driveway, because they're just going to be a minute. But the people before them, the first nine months I lived in my house, it was a nightmare. There's an absentee landlord, the leaves don't get picked up, the sidewalks don't get shoveled, the grass goes for weeks in the spring without getting cut. And I'm sure when they say they're going to live there, they're going to live there, but once it's changed, it's changed, and if they sell it to somebody who can very easily become an absentee landlord, then it just becomes another problem on the street. And that's really what I'm concerned about. It's just, it's not one car per family anymore, it's one car per person. And, you know, it's a beautiful street, and I hate to see it just packed with cars all the time. So that's my main opposition, and I've only lived there a year and a half, but I really, it's a really nice little street, and I don't want to see it negatively impacted by making changes.
Thank you very much. Go ahead, sir.
How do you do? Michael O'Grady, 32 Reed Street. And first off...
Please pick up that microphone again, please. Thank you.
Got it? I would dispute the fact that that was originally a two-family house.
Sorry, sir, we need your name. Will that microphone stay up by itself?
Michael O'Grady.
Okay.
32 Reed Street. And first off, I kind of doubt that that house was built as a two-family. I mean, a lot of those houses converted after the war, and were two-family for a while, and a lot of them have reverted back to single. My house is probably listed as a two-family, 3032, but it's not. Several of them have converted and maybe just haven't changed designation. Anyhow, so what we want to do is to put in an application to allow a change from a single-family, which it has been for, I believe, 17 years. I've been there 41, so I kind of know, to a two-family house. It's on a lot that's too small, 8,748 square feet, when 10,000 is required. On a lot that's too narrow, 70,000 square, 70 feet wide, when it should be 100. And to permit a side yard setback from 10 feet to 5.4, which if it was an open lot next to it, wouldn't be a big deal, except that the house next to it is right on the line also. You're going to know what time they wake up in the morning, what they're having for breakfast, and what game is playing on TV. You're going to be about 10 feet apart. And it is in a Historic District, which has been established for over 10 years now, which was very transparent. And we've already had a meeting with the Historic District where this application was rejected. So I'm actually kind of surprised we're here tonight. Now, being as narrow as that yard is, the driveway is only one car width wide. So you know, when you've got two families there, somebody's not going to be going in and out. They're going to be parking in the street, which is already a narrow, really congested street. Ambulances have had to actually go door-to-door to get people to move their cars under certain circumstances. It's just a safety issue. So I just can't see this happening. And looking at your planning and zoning points, I don't see it as being responsible growth. It's not attractive, or preserving Milford's unique characteristics. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else speaking in opposition? Anyone else speaking in opposition? Okay, Mr. Lynch?
Thank you. And as I had stated during my presentation, these plans do have to go back to the Historic District Commission. My clients had appeared before them at one point with a larger addition, and the plans were rejected. The plans that are before you tonight are a scaled-back version of the plans, so they are scheduled to go back this week to the Historic District Commission. In terms of parking, right now, the driveway has two parking spaces. My clients have two cars. There's going to be a one-bedroom apartment upstairs, so that the thought would be that there would be only one additional car that would be on the property, and there is sufficient area to gravel in the front to have off-street parking for that car. In terms of the aesthetics, my clients have done an extensive amount of work to the house since they bought it. This addition would be done in conformity with the requirements of the Historic District Commission. They're very strict, both that commission and the one here in the downtown Duck Pond area. The commissions are very strict in terms of the window styling, the siding, in terms of facades and roof pointing. They're very, very sensitive to architectural design standards to have the house meet the other colonial residences in the area. So, you know, I really am saying to you that those comments really have no merit. So, you know, I'd like to just leave you with the thought that, again, one of the items in the handout was a copy of the 1948 assessor's card. That's the most recent card that is on record. A lot of the city records were lost during the flood of Hurricane Gloria back in the early 1980s. If we all remember, the city assessor's records and the tax records were in the basement of this building, and they were wiped out in the flood. But there are a number of records that do remain, and that card does show that this was a two-family residential use in 1948, and it's our contention and our representation to you that it has been used as a two-family residence until the owner prior to my clients, they want to now, again, bring it back to a use that is in conformity with the neighborhood. Thank you.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Lynch before we close?
I have a question.
Mr. Lynch, we have a few questions. Go ahead. Sarah.
What were the dimensions of the addition that was presented to the Historic Board last month?
He said it wasn't last month, it was a while ago.
It was closer to 500 square feet, so it was reduced by some 20 percent. This is 400.
When was the rejection for the first plans?
Last month, the November meeting.
Go ahead, Sarah, you had something else? No? Okay.
I did.
Go ahead, Mr. Vassino.
So, Mr. Soto already gave one recommendation on how to avoid the side yard setback variance request. I guess I have another one, which is, why not just reduce the whiff of the addition? If you reduce it to 12 feet instead of 18.3, then you're well within the setback as well, and that still leaves you with a healthy addition. Looking for ways to avoid the variances.
I get you. I get it, I get it.
Yeah, absolutely.
If you're throwing something out there that you want my clients to come back with, an amendment to it, I mean, we'd be stupid not to listen to you, and you know that's the way I always operate.
Yep.
Mr. Soto.
Lynch, I don't have a problem with the 70-foot width of the lot, because probably 90% of the two families...
It's in conformity with all the other lots.
90% of the two families in Milford probably are 70 feet or less.
Well, can I just throw another point in there before you...
But I have a problem with the parking.
Okay, can I just throw one other... Okay. Can I just throw one other point? The point that I want to stress is the zone. It's not in a R-10 zone. It's in the SFA-10 zone. I mean, they could tear this house down and put eight, 830G apartment units in there or something. I mean, I, you know, and I'm, I'm not saying that they are going to do that. They're not going to do that. They want to do this addition, and they want to follow this plan. But I'm talking about the zone itself lends itself to a dense use. So I, I get it. The parking area that they would be having would be in the front of the house.
But I think you need, I think you need another driveway apron, and I think you need another driveway apron and park a driveway on the right side of the house. Because that, the neighbor's concern is all the parking. So if you could, you know, work that into it.
Well, that falls under Chris Sale's, you know, you know. I mean, that's, that's Chris Sale's call, right?
Yeah, but your plan, if you provide us with the parking, might be beneficial in solving some of the problems. That's all I'm saying.
So you're talking about an, an additional apron in the front of the house rather than just gravel?
Yeah, so you could park on the right side of the house for the tenant. Because even if it's a one-bedroom, you're still going to have two cars. If a couple moves in there, they both have cars or something. So you could have four, four to six cars here, depending if there's visitors or kids or anything, you know?
Okay. Well, that was the thought. It was just to be placing gravel down if you want the plans to show...
Yeah, but how are you going to get to that gravel?
Okay.
You got trees there on the, on the, between the curb and the sidewalk. You got a tree there right where it would be. So I, I think you need a curb cut there and a driveway apron.
Any other questions? No? Okay. Okay, this hearing's closed. Okay. I think the question, rather than offering suggestions on how we can reconstruct things, is I think the question is, should this be a two-family house? You know, one of the points that was made is it can be changed to a family, to a two-family house. And the people that had asked for that and went ahead and did that can resell it. And so the other thing is financial gain. They're making this house, you know, an apartment house or whatever it is for financial gain. So that's, that's something to also consider in this variance.
It was a non-conforming house as a two-family with its dimensions, with the property dimensions, and it was brought into conformity under the previous owners. So I'm not really sure why we would allow a non-conformity again.
Any other comments? Anyone ready to make a motion on this?
Well, I do think it's two issues. It's the single and double family, but also the addition. And there have been several suggestions here tonight that if the owners still want to make an addition, there are ways to do it without asking for a variance. So I think there are two issues on the table.
Go ahead.
Well, my feeling is it's near the center of town, and, you know, you're looking for rental units near downtown for the train station and stuff like that. I mean, I'm not opposed to turning it back to a two-family, as long as they made the improvements that would make the neighbors happy. And that would be, I would say you need like six cars off the street, and that would solve that parking problem. But, and I would get that addition behind the house, so it looks like a single-family house. That's only my thoughts on this, so.
Okay. We have differences of opinions. So we make a motion to whatever, whatever, approve, deny, deny without prejudice. You know what we usually do, so.
Make a motion to deny without prejudice.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to deny without prejudice. And we have a second on the motion. Mr. Hirsch?
I agree.
With the motion?
With, with the motion.
Yeah. Mr. Soto?
With the motion.
Mr. Vasina?
With the motion.
Ms. Ferranti?
With the motion.
I'm with the motion. Denied without prejudice.
Item number three, 16 White Oaks Road, MBP 75 slash 922 slash 9, in an SFA-10 zone. Attorney Kevin J. Crusaden for Milton Investments LLC, owner. Variance of section 3.2.4.1. 100-foot lot width required for two-family use where 60 is provided.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, my name is Kevin Crusaden with the law firm of Carol Crusaden &amp; Moore at 3 Lafayette Street here in Milford. This presentation and application tonight is brief. This property is located in the SFA-10 zone. It is, however, located off of High Street. It doesn't have any other restrictions on it as far as historical or any other type of property restrictions or use restrictions. The reason we're here tonight is because there's one variance request. It's for a lot that is too narrow. In this zone, in order to have a two-family use, you need a lot width of 100 feet. We have a lot that's 60 feet wide. The lot was created by a subdivision map in 1941. So the lot predates this SFA-10 zoning regulation. I'm not sure when SFA-10 came into, came into play, but it was long after 1941. So we have a pre-existing lot with a, the use we're requesting that's allowed in the zone. The hardship is the width of the lot and the fact that the zoning regulations changed after the subdivision was created in 1941. And really, that's my presentation.
Attorney Crusaden, do you have a site plan showing how this house is going to be, sit on the, on the lot?
I do. I have extra, I have, do you have an actual, you don't have one?
I don't have one in my packet.
So as you can see, it's a proposed duplex. The lot's extremely long and narrow for the zone. It meets all, the application meets all the other zoning regulation requirements. This is, if you're not familiar with White Oaks Road, it's on a dead-end street. Years ago, an application was approved for an affordable housing complex in the back there. I don't know whether that, it's, that developer or applicant owner got, I think sold that property, so I don't know what the status of that is.
Any other questions, Ray?
Yeah, I have a question. Who, who will be residing in this duplex?
Uh, it would be, it would be rental. We don't have any, I don't, I don't know if my client, he's here. I should have mentioned, Mr. Skinner's here tonight, Milton Investments LLC. I don't know if they have, if he has potential tenants yet.
How wide are these properties around the corner on High Street?
They look to be, I don't have the measurements on the plans, but it looks, if I'm comparing it to the 60-foot width here, they look fairly close, maybe 70 feet, 60 feet, 70 feet in that general. The, the uses on the street are, it's a mixture of single-family and two-family on that street.
The hardship is it's 60 feet instead of 100?
Well, the hardship is actually, it's the width of the lot at 60 feet. But the hardship, that's what is unique to this piece of property with respect to this zoning regulation requirement. But it arises out of the regulations, SFA-10, and the fact that the subdivision was created long before the regulation was put into effect.
The rear of that property, is that just all landlocked in there, or what is, what is that?
Um, I went out there today, and I-95 on-ramp was right behind it. I don't know if you know, I don't know if it's exactly, yeah, it's right there. It's I-95 entrance ramp, and then there's another house that's on High Street.
So there, is there any, there's no access to the back of that property, though?
No.
If the houses were built up front, then that would really seal that off.
I'm sorry, if the houses were built where?
If the houses were built in front, if it was granted, that would seal off the rest of that property for any other use.
Well, yeah, it's an S, it's in an SFA-10 zone. So if you had a wider use or a wider lot, you could put, you know, whatever would fit there according to the zoning regulations. But in this particular situation, there, there couldn't be any other use. You're, it's, this lot is either a single-family or a two-family, depending on the outcome of tonight's meeting.
Other questions? Anyone else speaking in favor? Anyone else speaking in favor of this?
You members of the board, excuse me, I've lost my voice. My name is Christopher Cody. I'm general counsel to the Milford Redevelopment and Housing Partnership. The MRHP owns the property directly next door to the east, I believe, at 16 White Oaks Road. And they are in favor of the proposal. The, the property, subject of the proposal was a blighted property, which was recently purchased and resold to Mr. Skinner. Mr. Skinner's made this proposal, and the housing authority is fully in support. The property that they own next door is of a similar width. It's a single-family property. They've owned it for better than 15 years. And this is a substantial improvement to the neighborhood.
Thank you. Anyone else speaking in favor? Is there anyone here opposed? Anyone here opposed to this application? Any questions? No further questions? Okay. Did you have a comment, Mr. Crusaden?
No, I don't know.
Okay. Okay, this hearing's closed.
So comparing the scale against the other plots, or looking at the scale and then comparing it against the other lots that are on the map, it's almost two times as long, but basically the same width. It certainly looks to me to be a good use of the space. And at this point, I don't really have a problem with it.
Go ahead.
Now, the house that was there was really dilapidated, and this would be a real improvement to the neighborhood. And it's almost a, what was it? Oh, it's point, I thought it was .42 on the, what's the actual? It says .34. I thought it was .42, almost half an acre. But it's a big lot. I don't have a problem with this.
Yeah, I think it's a big enough lot for two families. Unfortunately, it's oddly shaped, and the width just isn't there. But it is a, certainly a big enough lot for two families.
Okay, we need a motion. Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Approval is based on the hardship and the narrowness of the lot.
We have a motion to approve. We have a second on the motion. Mr. Hirsch?
Second with the motion.
Mr. Soto?
With the motion.
Mr. Vasina?
I'm with the motion.
Ms. Ferranti?
With the motion.
I'm against the motion. It passes.
Item number five, 257 Broadway, MBP 9 slash 179 slash 1A, in an R-5 zone. Thomas Crispino, owner. Variance of section 4.1.4. Deck projection to 2.9 where 8 is permitted.
Hello, everybody. I'm Tom Crispino. This is my wife, Tanee. She's owner with me of the property on 257 Broadway. We're in the process of elevating the house. After Sandy, we got a little skittish, and so we're elevating the property. We know with the elevation, on the Hauser Street side, there is a landing and a stairway that goes along with this elevation without a variance. But what we've lost here is the front door entrance. The front door entrance is where all our large furniture and other things were come through that door, because the side door just won't allow it. It's, you walk in that door, it's narrow. There's a mudroom right there. So there's no way that we can use that. And I'll give you an example. We just bought a couch, a sleeper couch brought in. We purposely brought it in before the elevation because we weren't sure how this was going to go, because we had to use that front entrance. It would never have made it in the side. So what we're asking is that the landing that's allowed us be allowed to go down the side of the house, where we're going to add another addition into that front porch area where that front door is, allowing us to use it basically as the same, with the same purpose as the front door would have been as we had it before. So it's really to allow us to get things in and out of the house. Without it, we're kind of not going to be able to do that.
And your hardship is, please?
That we have, if, without this, without this new entrance, we will not be able to get large items in and out of the house.
So what, what are you going to have for an entrance? Just the one to the rear?
No, no. The, the one in the rear is, is the one that we can't use. We're going to, if we, if we're allowed to extend the landing down the side of the house, where we can put a door in that front, now, you guys have the, the plans for it?
We do.
There's a front, where that front door comes in, there's a little porch area. And at, right now, there's two Anderson windows in that location. We're going to get rid of those, put another door in there, so that we can get large items in and out.
So when you raise it, you're going to close off the front door?
Yes. Yeah, we have to.
And what you're asking for is you, you, you can have the stairs without a variance, and they are, because they are moved out. What you're actually asking for is a, is kind of a deck, a runway along the whole side of the house?
Yes.
Okay. And you said there's a door. So you're going to have two doors on one side?
On the one side, yes.
Any other additional questions? Yep, go ahead, Mr. Soto.
What is the measure, so the deck is the blue line on the, on the survey, right? But I don't see a width for that.
What page you on?
Or is it eight, eight foot six? Is that how wide the deck's going to be?
No, that sounds, that sounds wide.
That sounds right?
No, that sounds wide.
Right?
Uh, no, it's going to be seven, seven feet. All right, seven feet?
Yes. What's that, 6.8? 6.6, is that 6.6? Okay, 6.6 feet, six and a half feet?
Uh, seven. It's on, I'm looking at page four. I'm sorry, page two.
I'm looking on your survey.
Oh.
Your survey says six feet, six feet six.
Here's the original entrance. And here's where we want to put an entrance in, is right here. This is the front door, so that we can, because we can't use this to get in.
You're going to put the entrance here?
Yes.
But this is the deck like that?
Yes.
So how are you going to get something?
Well, the architect measured it and gave us a width that would allow us to get a, a shot in there without a problem. This was added to just give it a little design.
Okay, so why can't the stairs be closer and reduce this, this part to, like this corner and take it straight? You don't need all that, do you?
Well, the thing is, is with this other entrance here, it's, it would be so narrow, we have a trouble getting in there now with the, with the narrower part. So we figured if we had a little bit wider thing, it would be easier. Like I said, we just brought a fairly large couch in. It would be very difficult with a narrower deck. I mean, there's nobody, there's nobody on this side of the house.
Okay.
Yeah. And, and we're, it's, the parking is pretty bad there as well. So we're hoping to put the cars under the house, so we don't have to...
When you raise it.
When we raise it, yeah.
Okay. Okay. Okay, any other questions? Ms. Ferranti, do you have a question for this gentleman? Or Mr. Vasina?
Well, the deck, why does the deck need to go the full length of the house? Once you get to the doorway, aren't you just...
No, I'm sorry.
It just seems like an embarrassment of riches to go all the way down.
Well, no, the, the side door that we're, that, the existing side door is, is what
Well, no, this, the side door that we're, that, the existing side door is what you're looking at. That is the door that we can't get anything large in and out of. So we're ask, and because we're getting a stairway and a landing there with the elevation of the house, it would be easy for us to just run that down, put another entrance in, and replace the front door entrance with this side door entrance, which would give us the ability to get large items in and out. That side entrance just will not accommodate it.
Why not make the existing door bigger? And then you just have one door, and then you don't need to have the deck go all the way down.
Because to the right of the, the door is the kitchen and some utility, and to the left would not help, because that would put us deeper into the pocket and not be able to make that turn in. We've tried to figure out ways around it, it just, the couches we just bought is a queen size sleeper, and we, we purposely got it before the raise, because we would not be able to get it in that side door. That front door is where everything of any size has come in and out of. And we're trying to be able to have that same ability to move stuff in and out through that front area, because that seemed to be the best way to, to get anything in and out with less...
So even with raising the house, which is a big deal, really?
Yes.
And that you're, you're not getting any other additional alterations to make it any better?
I'm sorry?
You're just raising, you're, you're raising the house, but you're not doing any other structural things to the house to, that would make it better as far as an entrance?
I, I don't know.
Far as, you know, you're saying you can't get anything through the door?
No, we can get certain stuff, it's just a large...
So there must be a way to make the doorway bigger to accommodate, you know, whatever, whatever you're trying to do, rather than, the thing of it is, you're asking for a variance all along, continued variance all along the whole side of the house to allow the deck.
Right.
You can have the stairs in a way of getting up there. So some of the suggestions that have been made is, why do you need the whole deck along the side? Can it be a partial from the stair?
When you say partial, what do you mean?
Halfway down the house, rather than...
Well, no, because there's, we need to, we need to put the, a door...
Because you're putting the door toward the front, the new door toward the front.
Well, because, yeah, because you can't go into the kitchen area, because there's sink and granite there, and we can't, I mean, we can go into the living room area, I guess, but that would put you through a living area. This, this space in the front that you see is, it's nice, but it's really not useful, and it would be a good use for us to be able to use that instead of having to, to put something in a space that's, that's...
Okay, so, so really what you're saying is, because you're raising the house, that has created the problem?
Yes. It's creating the problem for the front door. The front door's always been our, our entrance for deliveries of large items.
Okay. I think, did we ask if anyone else here was speaking in favor? If you're speaking in favor, you can come forward, sir. Your name and your address, please.
I'm Roy Olson, 10 Hauser Street, and I'm in favor of this. I think this is just a, a good solution for the problem we do have down along the waterfront. We had the water come all the way up to our houses during Sandy, and I think this is, it was just as simple, raise the house, and I see very little impact on, on the, on the neighborhood.
You have a question for, for who?
For the applicant.
For the applicant?
Yeah, no, the guy that's speaking.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you.
Just, just, Mr. Soda has a question.
Mr. Olson, you're the architect?
Yes, I am.
Okay, so maybe you can answer these questions for us. About the, why does the deck have to be as big as it is?
It possibly can be reduced, but we were, we were using this corner here, trying to stay off the corner of Broadway and Hauser Street, and utilizing the, what's presently the, the front porch, and use that as a way to enter into the building.
Okay, but why do you have to be six foot six? Couldn't you be four foot? And then, you know, walk a lot, a lot of these houses, we've done with the doors on the side, we've done a four-foot walkway. You know, approved a four-foot walkway, not six foot six, and you could put the stairs right against the house, so you don't need that three-foot space in between there.
It could be done, but I think they wanted to also utilize it if, if they had to build it to be able to use it.
Well, that's what we're asking, so they're saying they need if, they need to get the furniture in.
That, that was the primary.
Now you're saying, now you're saying they need to, to use it as a deck.
Well, that was the primary reason, was to be able to move furniture.
But it could be built smaller and still get furniture in, correct?
Yes.
If it was built smaller, they still need a variance, and that, that's what we're talking about, the variance down the whole side.
Well, you wouldn't need as much of a variance.
Right, exactly.
Right. You could take three feet off it.
What we're trying to do everywhere is cut down on density.
Right. Instead of 2.9 feet, they could probably get away with four feet there and still have a, a nice walkway down the side.
Yeah, I mean, is it, is it a deck, or is it a walkway to accommodate furniture? I mean, how many times is furniture going to be moved in and out of this house as well? I mean, I think we're trying to use it for two different aspects, and we need to keep in mind the setbacks and the conformity that we've held other people to, other establishments to.
I mean, if we were going to build it, and we can get two uses out of it, I thought that would be a good thing. Not a bad thing.
Not infringing on the setbacks.
Hold up. I'm sorry. When we designed it, we, we tried to figure the best, and you're right, and you know how often does furniture come and go? Often enough. My kids are going to college, we've had stuff in and out of there quite a bit lately. How long that lasts? You know, who knows? We're a long time Milford residents, we're not going anywhere, we're really trying to enhance as well as need. The need really is there for us to get another entrance to get large stuff in it, it's just, it is. We were figuring that between that and the enhancement, or the widening of it would give it a, the house also a better look, because if it's going to be there, we might as well have it look good for the neighborhood. That neighborhood has been improving unbelievably since we've been there, and we're kind of adding to that, I believe. So a couple of feet of decking seems to me to be a little of an issue that, because the primary need is for us to have access, it really is, and the extra little bit of decking is to enhance the look, which we didn't want to offend with our neighbors as well. So it's, it's really, again, the primary reason is to be able to get in and out of there.
Any other comments, Mr. Vassino? Anybody else? Okay, anyone else speaking in favor? Is there anyone here opposed? Anyone here opposed? Okay, this hearing's closed. Well, like you said, we need a variance down the whole side. Suggestion first, even with, even with a narrower deck, still need a variance. I know we have desires on what we want to do, but we have to...
Didn't seem like our opinions were necessarily welcomed, and our recommendations, so I'm not sure if deny without prejudice is appropriate at this time. That's just my opinion.
Well, I mean, I do see, you know, a need for the walkway, and I do see a need for a deck, so I mean, it's only six foot six, it's not like they're building a 12-foot deck. A six foot six with a walkway, you've only got room for some chairs on there, so I mean, yeah, we could, we could narrow it down in some spaces, but how's it going to look all chopped up on the outside of the house?
And I was also curious about the hardship. We asked the applicant directly what his hardship was, and it wasn't a hardship for the land, it was a hardship for his living environment?
Well, once they raise the house, they would have to put a larger set of steps to get it in the front door, you know, to keep the door in the front, so the hardship is kind of like the nar, the way the, the house is positioned on the lot, I think he didn't, maybe he didn't understand the hardship.
I think having to raise the house because of the storm is hardship. If you're losing a front door, a front door...
And once you, yeah, you can't, you don't have the room to build a landing in the front of the house, it'd be almost all out in the street, so...
And they're not changing the inside of the house, they're just raising it. So to put the door on the exterior where it would normally be towards the front of the house and not have to reconfigure a living room or a kitchen for a door, I think is appropriate.
Saying the side door that, up front where they're...
Side door that they've proposed being towards the front of the house, not having to cut into the house as it's already constructed.
Okay, so we have a couple of different...
I mean, he could, he could make it smaller, but it, it, it's only six and a half feet, so I mean, it's, it's reasonable, I feel.
Okay, we need a motion.
I make a motion to approve?
Second.
Approval is based on the narrowness of the lot. And the position of the house on the lot.
We have a motion, we have a second on the motion. Ms. Ferranti?
With the motion.
Mr. Vassino?
I'm against the motion.
Mr. Hirsch?
Against the motion.
Mr. Soda?
With the motion.
I'm against the motion. Tonight.
Item number six, 66 Bird Lane, MBP 48 slash 713 slash 61H, in an R12.5 zone. Deborah and Brian Fitzpatrick owners, variance of section 3 dot 1 dot 4 dot 1, front yard setback of 24.8, where 30 required for one-story addition to the home.
Good evening. My name is Brian Cottington, I'm a builder and also resident of Milford, representing Brian and Debbie Fitzpatrick for their home there on 66 Bird Lane. Hardship is extremely irregular lot. If you look at the, the lot, we're sitting right in the middle of Bird Lane, but there's what looks like a blow-through cul-de-sac at one point, or possibly a paper road that might have been there at one time, or listed at one time. They're looking to put a great room addition, single floor, great room addition, onto the house. Plenty of room over there, but after getting the survey done, there's property line issues which makes this consider a corner lot, where a 30-foot setback would be encroaching with, with the addition.
Okay, and your, your hardship is the odd-shaped lot?
Yeah, it's a very irregular lot. We actually have a curvature of a sidewalk to the frontal portion of the lot, it's, it's actually, the, the property line's way in from where you would think it is. It's been maintained, it's, it's a lot of room over there, but you wouldn't know that the property line is as close to the house as it was.
It, this is the half circle that goes there, the, it's a half circle on, on that side, but it's...
Nothing on the other.
It's a straight on the other side, correct?
Yeah, and, and to me, it doesn't look like a cul-de-sac break through.
So it is encroaching on this property?
Yeah, and, and to me, it looks like it was possibly going to be a possible road, but if that was a road there, it would be encroaching into a, a wildlife preserve. There's a Milford Conservation Trust right behind their property that basically goes from, from the main road all the way to Ford High School. It's a wooded area, goes the whole way.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Soda.
So your property line is probably, what, about 20 or 30 feet away from the sidewalk?
It's way further than that. It's about 60 feet from, from...
So really, from the sidewalk to the corner of the addition, then you'll have about 85 feet?
Yeah, there's plenty of room to do it, it's just, it's just that it's, getting the survey, we would be encroaching this, this setback.
Mr. Chairman, perhaps I can clarify the oddity going on with the, with the survey. As you can see on the survey, this part of Bird Lane was, was once a cul-de-sac, and usually at the end of cul-de-sacs, you have that bulb that goes, that the turnaround area. This gentleman has half of that on his lot, but you don't see the corresponding other half on the other side of the road. So that's why the map looks odd like that.
A genuine hardship.
That's for the board to decide.
Oh, if not for that, that little bite from the cul-de-sac, there, there would be no setback infringement here.
No, none at all. Okay, anyone else speaking in favor? Anyone here, I know we're, we're limited on people here now, but we still have to ask, anyone here opposed? Any, any further questions? Okay, this hearing's closed. We'll have an answer for you shortly.
I think that if that were a regular corner, he wouldn't even be here. It's that way because it was a cul-de-sac, it's not currently a cul-de-sac. I think the hardship is that that bite would not be taken out otherwise, and I don't see a problem with this.
No, I don't see a problem either, it's definitely a true hardship.
Yep, it's a true hardship.
Sure, I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve is based on the irregular shape of the lot due to the former cul-de-sac.
Motion to approve, and we have a second on the motion. Ms. Ferranti?
With the motion.
Mr. Vassino?
With the motion.
Mr. Hirsch?
With the motion.
Mr. Soda?
With the motion.
I'm with the motion. It passes. Interesting. All right. New business.
Mr. Chairman, you have to vote on the 2018 calendar.
Okay, I believe Meg has provided us with a, a calendar in our packet.
I have extra copies if anyone needs them.
So, acceptance of... Excuse me, is it possible to ask a couple of questions? You know you're going to have to ask the zoning officer.
Okay, can I do that?
Yes, yes. Okay, so we have 2018 calendar. Need acceptance of it? Everyone look at it, okay?
Make a motion to accept the calendar.
Okay, motion to accept it?
Aye.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Old business, we have any old business? Okay, staff update. Meg, anything going on?
Uh, really?
No? Okay. New year coming up? New year coming up? Okay.
Yeah, actually, the, hopefully we'll be replenishing our, our board strength in the new year.
That should happen, that's up to the mayor and, and who he puts in, so. Okay, let's see here now. Acceptance of the minutes from our November 14th hearing. They're read by everyone, any, any changes?
No changes.
All, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Okay. Applications for next month, we know that we have Holly Lane, we know we have Crabtree, and whatever else might come in, so.
I thought Holly was true.
Um, I don't know if it's withdrawn.
Holly was true.
Okay, it's, okay, it's withdrawn, okay. Okay, we need a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second. Okay, this meeting is adjourned.